...for meeting the board, I ask that we put it back fifteen if you would lead us in our prayer in place tonight.
If you will for a prayer, Barry Collier, just to teach with our system and then went into family business. He's not doing good at all, so feel more keep his family in prayer, we appreciate it. Heavenly Father, we should come to you tonight just to say thank you, Father, we thank you for the beautiful day that you've created. Father, we thank you for the men and women that have chose to make education a career and to work, lead, and try to teach our young people, which is our parents' most prized possession. Father, we just ask as a board that we make good decisions that'll enhance these children's learning and that we work abusively in all that we do, we ask it all in your name, amen.
Amen. United States of America and to put our like four states, one nation under God, in the middle with the end of injustice wrought.
The mission of the Wayne County School System is to empower all students to reach their highest levels of achievement. Our vision, our vision is in partnership with the community. The Wayne County School System will be a progressive system where all students acquire the knowledge and skills to be productive, responsible, and successful citizens in a rapidly changing world. We believe every one learns best when they are engaged participants in their learning.
Motion adopt the agenda. So move.
Second.
Move to second.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Yes ma'am.
Daniel.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Motion to approve the minutes from January eighth, two thousand nineteen.
So move.
Move to second.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
We have done.
Resolutions and recognitions.
Yes, sir, it's time, Dr. Burgess is going to recognize our Good as Gold staff member recognition we've been doing monthly.
All right, good evening everybody, this time we'd like to recognize two people from Odom Elementary. I asked Ms. Arati to send me a couple of names and she did, she put her vote out to the factory. So they actually chose the people that were, the two that are going to be recognized tonight. The first, the fellow staff members wrote that Ms. Becky Scott is always willing to lend a helping hand, her positive attitude is contagious, and her thoughts are genuine and sincere. She leads the Relay for Life activities for Odom Elementary. She has also created a community outreach program for our student council to be involved with a local nursing home throughout the year. So Ms. Becky Scott is recognized as Odom Elementary's certified Good as Gold staff member. So we can have her come forward, we'll present her with some gifts. I forget what that thing's called every meeting.
Tomer.
All right, this time we'd like to recognize the classified staff member. This is for, excuse me, my phone's really small print, Ms. Janice Daniels, our certified staff member. Ms. Janice has been a loyal staff member at Odom Elementary for over thirty years. She's worked in several grades over the years, was an outstanding bus driver for the Wayne County School System, and currently supports classroom instruction on a daily basis as a career professional. Her fellow colleagues wrote that she always puts student interests first. She always goes above and beyond to help the students and staff at Odom Elementary School. Ms. Janice Daniels. Awesome, thank you. Thank you, board.
All right, next item, Ms. Jones, Ms. Danny Jones shares some information about our strategic waiver contract with the state with the last meeting or the meeting before. Tonight, we have the actual contract adjusted, you know, with the new numbers and dates. Again, the contract, this is due to the state changing their, some of their accountability measures and timelines of us being a strategic waiver system and what each of our schools are expected to achieve over these next five years. I just remind you, this, this contract goes now through twenty twenty-one. Initially, when we first signed the contract and developed it with the state, it went through twenty twenty, but this one goes through twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, you know, again, do this, the state changing their baseline years and some of those things, but we're ready to approve this, there's some signatures. It's been up there, there's some signatures we have to get from myself and Mr. Ellis and we would like to move this into the main school as quickly as we can, any questions on that? If not, I do need action on this.
Motion for approval. Second. Move to second.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
All right, the next item, I was asked to put the after-school programs on the agenda and I've asked Ms. Danny, she's of course been curriculum director for many years and kind of has the background of what we've done in the past, what we're, what we're doing currently and some things that maybe we need to look at in the future, but I want it approved for discussion.
So, I wanted to give you a little bit of background of what we have done in the past with after-school programs and what's going on now with after-school programs. It's probably been six years or so since we had after-school programs at all of our elementary and middle schools and that year number may not be quite right, but some of the things that we found back during the time that we were consistently doing after-school programs is that they didn't work very well for our smallest children. Kindergarten through second grade children have had a day by two forty-five or three o'clock and they are tired and don't have a lot left in them for that kind of classroom instruction. We also know that transportation is key. If you're going to try to have an after-school program, you need to try to provide transportation because often our students who need additional support also need that transportation support and so we need to be sure that we are able to safely transport the children home and also in a timely manner. One of the things that we found out when we were consistently doing after-school programs is that sometimes it's hard to staff them and it's kind of the same thing. Teachers work really, really hard during the school day and are tired by the end of the day. You know, have a little break and then get right back into it is hard. I've sat in meetings, I used to be a board member at the Boys and Girls Club and I've sat in meetings where people would say, oh, all teachers would be happy to make some extra money and work at the after-school program and I think that, and you know, there are some sometimes and sometimes that's a good situation, but I think it is incorrect to assume that everybody is just lining up because you know, when a teacher's workday finishes, when their official workday finishes, they're far from finished, they've still got lots and lots to do to be ready to greet those, their regular kids the next day. We did find in the past that most of the time our after-school programs were remediation type programs and that we were fairly successful with kids that we considered to be bubble kids or kids that we thought were right on the edge of being able to get some extra enrichment and some extra instruction and to kind of get over the hump between not achieving mastery on the test, the state test, and achieving mastery on the state test. So, because we ran into some issues, many of our schools went to in-school tutoring instead of an after-school program. And the in-school tutoring either allowed us to hire retired teachers to come in. Some of the schools even did a model where teachers went on extended day contract and during their planning time, they tutored students who needed some extra support. Most of our schools now that do in-school tutoring don't use that model. They use the model where they're, where they bring in retired teachers or maybe a teacher who's just no longer in the classroom, maybe they're not retired but maybe they've stayed home with their children or whatever but want to work a few hours a week. This year Martha Smith is having an after-school program and they're using their Title I monies to do that. They have just started, it is going to be a fifteen-week program. They meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they're serving students in first through fifth grades. There are twenty students per grade level, there are two teachers per grade level and there's one special education teacher who floats and works where she's needed with all of the schools. And bus transportation is provided. That's probably been, that's probably been the most difficult part of their process and they've really been working really hard all year long to make sure things go smoothly. But, you know, our, we don't have just a huge pool of bus drivers and so, so some of that's been a little bit problematic, but you know, made it work. A couple of days the kids have gotten home later than expected because of the transportation, but they've been in contact with parents and have made that work. They're also, they have been able to work with a company called Curriculum Associates and Curriculum Associates is allowing them to pilot the instructional program that they're using and so that part is not costing them any, the instructional program is very promising. We've been really impressed with it. And so Martha Smith Elementary has dipped their toe back in the water of an after-school program and so like I said, it's just started, but we'll look forward to see how it goes. And so far, so good. So, you know, a lot of school systems, I did a little bit of digging in to see what some other school systems do and some other school communities do. And a lot of school systems do provide after-school care that is maybe not school-based. Maybe that maybe three elementary schools go together and their children, you know, parents pay a fee and their children go, and it's more of an enrichment type program with maybe STEM and STEAM activities, some athletic things, some reading clubs and things like that. But traditionally in Wayne County, the focus of our after-school programs has been a little bit more on academic remediation rather than those kind of whole child things that some systems do. Most of the systems that have those kind of after-school programs are much larger systems and they often partner with a YMCA or some other community entity to make that work. Questions?
That sounds really, really good, I saw that we're headed in the right direction, you know, as far as that's concerned with Martha Ross Smith and, you know, that kind of question, because I just want to know, you know, what we're doing, you know, how everything's going and it sounds good. I like the idea of doing the interventions during the school hours as well, so, you know.
Well, and Martha, yeah.
So.
And Martha Smith, of course, they have in-school interventions as well. They just have worked other ways to have those interventions rather than using the in-school tutors and they're focusing their money during those after-school hours. And I'm, I've been really excited because it will give us something to compare and something to share with the other schools that end the year.
Now, I ain't going to get this acronym wrong because I don't ever get it right, the A T T P program.
A P T T.
See, I told you it's going to get it wrong. I don't ever get it right. But on that, is it true it costs about eight thousand dollars for that program to be?
I try to stay out of the money. Um, phone in?
No.
Oh.
The startup is typically seven thousand dollars.
Go ahead.
I'm not familiar with that figure.
Well, typically the first year they have a lot, a lot higher costs to get the supplies and things that they need to get it, to get it going, but that's all paid out in Title I funds for that part.
Right. Have we looked into maybe doing parent university or looking into that particular program? Or, I know, and the reason I'm asking, Effingham Cowling, as you know, is one of the top schools within our recent program, recent area and district, and that is something they've been doing for years, is the parent university to get parents involved and if you go to their website, I mean, they just have a lot of things they, they're doing that, you know, get parents involved. In fact, one of the things they do within that parent university, they get the parents, they get the parents to actually recruit other parents and they get so many points for that. And at the end of the year, they get, they graduate and somebody's valedictorian, somebody's there. So it gives them incentives and they start kind of being competitive with it, but the outcome is what you want, is more parent involvement, so that's why I was asking.
All right, Ms. Danny, don't go too far. I asked Ms. Danny and also Dr. McDaniel just to, we didn't gather a whole lot of data. I really wasn't sure about this next item as far as class grades and exit exam comparison. I still kind of be ready to speak up and kind of, you know, answer any question. I really wasn't sure where we were going with this part. Can you certainly compile anything that you want, I just wasn't real clear.
Where I was going with this, I was just doing a little bit of reading on the National School Board Association website and one of the things they were discussing and talking about was inflated grades. And what they're referring to as inflated grades, that a student in the class has an A in algebra, but when they take the E L C T, they make a forty-three or sixty-something. And they were saying that there was this concern that in schools that were high poverty schools as well as schools that were schools that were well-affluent schools, you have that in private schools, they have this going on a lot. Because I guess if it's a middle road school, it's pretty, I have no idea, but that's one of the things they're saying is that, and it hurts our kids if we're inflating these grades and then that kid comes and takes an E L C T and it does not compare. So that's why I was asking, you know, what's comparison with our students' grades with their E L C Ts as well as the, you know, Georgia milestones exam, are they kind of jiving up? Now, I know you have situations where you have kids that have test anxiety, but, you know, so you can have those, but not the mass majority.
Right, in Georgia, I mean, in Georgia, we have some checks and balances with that. I, I think it's a problem, yes, and that's something that I just, basing it on my principal experience, not only at the high school but at the elementary school, that is a problem. But it, it's, it's a lot more complex than just the teacher just wants to give them a good grade because what happens is teachers have a hard time assessing students, for example, when they're out or they miss or they're, they're not proficient when they first take the test. And we, when we go back to remediate, sometimes we have to retest, sometimes we let them work on it. And so how do you assess it appropriately and factor into their overall average? So there's some challenges with it. I know, you know, we did some data analysis, you know, when I was there, Dr. McDaniel, I know he's, the CTAE, they followed suit with what we're doing with our E L C Ts, is their E O P As, the end of pathway assessments, they're counting twenty percent just like the E L C Ts. Again, trying to, that's what I mean by build-in, that's part of that overall average. So it should match up and I don't think it's perfect, I feel they have some room for growth there. Ms. Danny, did you want to say something?
I think that, I think that grade inflation is probably a bigger problem in our younger grades than it is at our middle and high schools. And I've not like done a correlation, but I feel like our high school grades are pretty much in keeping with those in-course tests. I think sometimes at elementary school it's a bigger problem because, you know, we bless their hearts. And at elementary school, you also have, you have times where the work is not completely independent, where the teacher has done a lot of modeling or the class has worked through something together and it ends up being a grade and so sometimes that does tend to inflate grades a little bit. And it's something that we talk about a lot at, when we have elementary collaboratives and we have opportunities for elementary teachers to gather together. But I would, and I don't think it's an epidemic problem, but if it were a problem, it's probably more of a problem at the lower grades than it is at our middle and high schools.
I have one more question for you. I know one of the things that we are pushing for is more rigor, and that's the big word, now it's rigor. And I was talking to a young lady yesterday and the kid told me that, you know, they're taking, you know, the eighth grade taking high lever classes, ninth grade classes and that type of thing and sometimes I think that people think that more work is more rigor. Now, that's just more work and, you know, they're kind of getting that confused and so what happens with our kids, especially when they're involved in other outside activities, they're giving them fifty problems a night instead of giving them problems that are more challenging. You know, you can give a kid, you know, five problems that are challenging and they get in depth versus giving them fifty problems and they ain't got anything out of it really. But wasted time or not wasted time, but spent a lot of time doing it and I was just wondering if, you know, that's something that has been addressed.
Yes, and I would, I would be, I mean, you know, you can always be surprised, but I would be surprised if, especially like in math, you said problems, I mean, in all math, if we had people that were assigning that many problems. You know, Leslie Mills is our longtime math recent consultant and she works with all grade levels and one of her rules is that you don't, you know, you don't assign fifty math problems for homework because it's really hard to unteach something that they've done incorrectly fifty times. And so, so that is something that we talk about. We talk a lot about rigor. One of the best things that we've done this year to increase rigor is our work with the writing to wind hair text packets. And at the beginning of the year, a teacher said, these things are hard and they are hard, they're rigorous. But our kids have risen to the challenge, they've risen to that expectation and, and it is difficult, it's difficult work. Students are having to do a lot of thinking to complete those assignments, but it's been a really positive thing for our students and for our teachers too. And I think we're going to, I think we're going to get a lot of bang for our buck out of that, not only in language arts, but in other classes because they're having to use those critical thinking skills, which is what rigor is really all about.
And I just want to thank you for everything that you do. I got another fabulous comment about you yesterday that said it puts you up against anybody in the state.
What is that nice? Take them off.
Yes, I just wanted to, I got board member training on here. I just wanted to remind the board about a couple of things. First thing is our February eleventh whole board training that we're going to have with one of our Georgia Leadership Associates, Dr. Parrish, if he'll be here with us. That's, I got it February eleventh at three o'clock, is that still, that's the feedback I got from everyone, is that still good? If it is, I'd like to go ahead and make that an official meeting when we can get a couple of signs if y'all want to take action on that, but that's February eleventh at three o'clock.
Maybe we make our board training a regular, a regular board meeting.
Second.
Move to second.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Pittkin.
Yes ma'am.
The other item in the realm of training, Mr. Pittkin, Mr. Harris, we'll need to have our local orientation. It has to be three hours, one of that, one of those hours has to be solely on finance and we can break that up. I recommend, you know, if it's, maybe we take an hour before a regularly scheduled board meeting and go ahead and get the finance part out of the way and then maybe another day we can schedule both you guys maybe to come out to board office and we'll have some other training. I thought I might pull in Ms. Mosley and Ms. Danny and Dr. Burgess, make some instruction and we get personnel a little bit, just the big pieces that, and that satisfies that three-hour requirement of local board orientation. Let's do that, okay? I'll, I'll just play email tag with you and try to schedule maybe an upcoming meeting, go ahead and get the finance out of the way, I think that'd be, that's a little meatier. Just an hour of that kind of, it's pretty meaty, so we'll do that and get it scheduled, all right? And the next item, I just wanted to let you know that I, the committee for naming our instructional support complex and that's kind of what we're calling it, the, the buildings at, where the new board office is housed, you know, we have a curriculum room, we'll get some signage up one day, but that's a board education, but we also have a curriculum room down there with Dr. Burgess and Ms. Danny are housed and we have a lot of professional learning going on there. We also have that back wing of rooms, I think we're going to try to utilize those, get those cleaned up, spruced up as we, they're still, I think they're still usable for us as well as our records room is located over there as well, I don't know if you were aware of that, but we moved, all our records are in the old lunchroom area. But on February ninth, which is a Saturday, twelve o'clock is the optimal day for Ms. Fuquay's family to have this dedication. So that's what we have tentatively planned unless you give me a direction to do scheduling. That's Saturday, February ninth, twelve o'clock noon, we'll just have a quick ceremony, have kind of open house, let folks walk around and we'll have some professionals set up probably down in the curriculum room and get that dedication out of the way. That's something we agreed to do a long time ago, we're just making it come to fruition. And I appreciate Dr. Johnson and that committee for doing the legwork on that, they work very hard to get this to that point. Any questions, comments, concerns on that, that date? Move ahead, move at full speed. It would be known as the Martha Fuquay Instructional Support Complex. Early, what else? I got Martha Ross Smith over mine. I have a couple of policies here. The first one is the homeless students policy and we have revised that. Dr. Smith just pretty much rewrote the whole policy to get, to make it come in line with some of the new legislation that came out and of course, this is with our legal counsel guidance in doing that. That's the policy, policy you have there for you to consider for approval. The other policy on a drug-free workplace, no change to that, it's just up for a five-year review. Any questions, concerns, or we're ready to take action on it if you're ready.
Question on the drug-free workplace and reading through that, do I understand it right that if a employee comes to you and says they got a problem, then they could get paid up to a year? Is that right?
That's correct.
Per board approval.
Yes, sir, of course, I'll give you the lawyer answer, it all depends, but yes, sir, there is a provision in there for that type of circumstance, but again, it depends on the details, that's correct.
You ready?
Yes.
I make the motion.
Move to second.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Pittkin.
Yes ma'am.
All right, next item is Ms. Williams has the November financial report ready for us.
And we discussed that bid policy, I hope to have that out to you tomorrow and draft one for you to review the changes that we need to make to any compliance with the federal guidelines. So, been working on that. This is the November financial statement, page one is at the top you said. About middle of the page you see our total operating cash, that's on November the thirtieth, four point three million. And then at the bottom of the page, nine point three million in total in local taxes split. But one of the things that I probably will do for the new board members when we go through that orientation is go over this financial report in a lot more detail with you so that you'll understand the numbers that you're looking at. Page two is our general fund balance sheet, current fund balance is nine point five million. Page three is our general fund revenue. Page three is our general fund revenue. For November, seven point six million, nineteen point three year to date. And the next several pages are expenditures for our general fund, and I don't typically go over there, those line by line. All of our departments are within, within their budgets as they should be. Nothing really out of the ordinary there. Page ten, capital projects. The only activity we had was the sales tax that we collected in the November, two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. The next couple of pages are prepay and federal funds. We survived cross functional monitoring. And, um, some of the items that they looked at was the cash management of those federal funds to make sure that we were not, um, requesting more money from the Department of Education than what we had already spent. Uh, that was, that was one of the things that they did look at. Page thirteen is school food service. Year to date, their revenues have exceeded their expenditures by a hundred and fifty-one thousand, so they're having a good year. And the next page is some details of the school food service expenditures. And the final page are budget amendments. We received the ag construction bond grant that we're using for the greenhouse at the high school. And construction related equipment, which is going into the technology lab there in Mr. Wagner's classroom. And then we amended the budget to make the change in the resource officer contract that we're going to be into with the secret jester. Any questions? Thank you.
You don't need action on that tonight?
Yes, we do. We're in full.
So move.
Sir?
Move to second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Pittkin?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, last item is the track project. This is a project we've, you know, moved forward at one time and we tabled, there's some financial situations we had to work through, but we are at the point now of the East Plus passing and making plans for the future. I just need some, you know, it's been almost a year since we decided the direction. I want to circle back around and see, um, we needed to decide a location. Um, if, if we're, if we're putting the track at the high school, we already have those plans, uh, you know, ready, ready to go. All we would have to do is put that out for bid. If, if we're gonna put it over here at J C Stadium, um, there's a whole drawing plans and, and development, that would take some time too. That's, it has to involve with architect because obviously it's gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars. I'll just remind you of some of the numbers. The bids that come in at, with the project back at the high school, I think it was one point seven million dollars to give us pretty much everything we, we felt like we needed. That's what we put to the architect, drew the plans, that's what they bid on. And we value engineer, we, we cut things out of it to get it down, okay? I don't recommend doing that at this point. I mean, we have the money for the, for the, uh, project, that's something that is needed in a bad way. And a track is, is, has been, uh, you know, disrepair really for, you know, close, close probably twenty years. I, I don't remember it being functional, you know, back when I was coaching, to be honest with you, as far as hosting meetings, that's, anyway, the need is there. I have done some numbers, you know, just to have a track, if you put a track at J C Stadium, just the track, you know, uh, you know, not, not the best of the best, but certainly not the cheapest you can get, it's gonna run you about a million, a million dollars. I mean, that's pretty much the going rate for one. Something else to consider is that we just, we're gonna have to do something with the track at J C Stadium regardless. We also have stands, you know, the stands, that's, that's an issue. We're at the point now with those, really the home and visitor stands, that we're replacing metal pretty much every year. I mean, we have to have them inspected before we can have a football season and house that many people in the, in the bleachers in there. We're having to, you know, cut steel out and replace it with new steel. So it's, it's time to do something with that as well. And so I'll be up for discussion and I'll.
I don't, I understand the concern about, you know, the need for, you know, repairs and stuff with football field and stadium and everything, but my main concern is about accessibility for our kids and where it's gonna get the most use out of it. And, uh, uh, what, what happened is ninety percent of the time, it will not be in utilization by our kids if it's at the football stadium, whereas over ninety percent of the time, it'll be in utilization by our kids if it's located at the high school, where when that, uh, school site was originally, uh, designed, it was already designed for that track to go there. And I just think it'll be just more beneficial and what we do in a better service for our kids if that track is put there because that is the main priority, is what is best for our kids. And so that, that's my, uh, my view on it. We've already done the, uh, the legwork. We've had, uh, the drawings, uh, pulled up for, uh, over at the school and, um, I'm just adamant about that that is where it needs to go. I also think that we need to start thinking progressively about, uh, our future. You know, I know we don't see a lot of times where money will come from and those type of things, but we need to start looking at, uh, our facilities being relocated on the other side. And I know that's a bunch of money, a lot of money, uh, for that to happen. I know a lot of the, uh, things, there's a lot of people concerned about, you know, the history and those type of things as far as, uh, the stadium is concerned. But as you know, everybody plays football at J C Stadium. The middle schools play there, uh, both of them. We have two middle schools and a high school plays there. And then sometimes the rec department also comes in and uses that field. Well, if you decided that you wanted to, uh, eventually build another stadium, guess what? Now your middle, uh, two middle schools can utilize that field and your high school will solely use the, the new stadium. You know, I know that's, you know, way down the line, but we've got to think progressively and stop thinking backwards when we're making decision on things.
So the price of the football field, I mean, at the high school, does that include stands and everything?
Yep.
That's the stands that, you know, we talked about, basically some, uh,
Portable stands.
On concrete pads and portable stands like the, the aluminum bleachers, which would be sufficient. And that doesn't include, of course, it didn't include, you know.
Restrooms.
We already have restrooms out there.
We got a couple of restrooms, but we don't have, you know, a, a field house or anything like that to change or to set stand. Parking's my biggest concern with that.
Come on, Jay. The last time I went to a, uh, uh, Georgia Southern game, I had to take a shuttle bus to get to park. And also, when you go to most of these sites, uh, you're gonna walk a little ways to get to the track. I mean, that's just the way it is. You're gonna walk a little ways. You know, we've got the big parking lot that can be utilized, you know, at the school where the students park at, you got that. Uh, you wanna park, park buses, buses can park on the bus loop. You got an elderly person needs to come through, drop them off right there, they roll on in or walk on in at that point and then whomever, they go on and park. At football practice in the summertime and spring football, when the guys are out there practicing, people are parked alone right out, uh, out there by the ag building all the time. So parking really is not an issue. If you, be realistic about it.
So money wise, what would you save to do it at the stadium compared to the high school?
Just the, just the track's gonna be about a million.
And you ain't, they moved the stands back and stuff like that.
That's, that's just the track. That's correct.
Well, everybody that's called me to talk about it don't want it to leave the stadium. They think it, and it seems to be cheaper as far as, from what I've understood, to do it there. But, you know, and I'm all about the kids too, but you can take what you save and put on academics somewhere, since then you're still having kids.
Yeah, but the purpose of a track is for the kids. You got physical education who is trying to run a mile run, they probably don't even do it anymore around the bus loop. I can tell you it's five point, five and a half times around the bus loop because I taught there. Well, then you're running them around there and here comes the sped bus to drop kids off, so they're dodging the sped bus. So, you know, it is about the kids. That is what we're supposed to be making decisions about, is what is best for our kids. Now, when I talk to people in the public, they've told me, I've been out there walking before, they've told me, said, hey, uh, look, you all can rip this up and just put some pavement back down. All we want is somewhere to walk. You can make that look just, just like it's, uh, a million dollar track by paving it, putting some lines out there and not worrying about whether or not the kids are dropping bubble gum on it, whether they're dropping, uh, weights and soda on it during the course of the ballgame. Also, I was told that when we put that track out there, that it was going to be, I'm telling you what happened, not what I, what I think. I was told that we're gonna have a different route to go in, that people would not just constantly walk, uh, through there, a different entrance for everybody. That did not happen. That did not happen. And so we need to, like I say, look for the future, look for things. It was, it was voted on before for one point five million dollars for it to go over here. Now, I'm gonna tell you like this here, I'm gonna be here till the day I die. It might be tomorrow, but I'm gonna be here till the day I die. But our football coaches, they come and they go. I'm just being realistic about stuff now. Okay? So I am looking what's best for the kids. I don't have a dog in the fight. Not a dog in the fight. The only dog I have in the fight, and they're not dogs, they're the most precious commodities we have, are our kids. And that's what I'm looking at.
So do we have?
New, exactly where is the location? On the other side of the practice field, at the school over there?
Yes, on, on the, uh, on the, I guess, the backfield closest to the, to the wood lines. I mean, it, it was mapped out that way.
Do we have a price on what it costs just to redo that track to walk on?
To repay it's gonna be between, uh, I, I, one bid was about forty-five thousand, another bid, not a bid, but a quote was about sixty to just re-ask for it.
Well, if I may, Sharon, I certainly respect everything you said about, uh, you know, accessibility to the children and all. But the reality of the matter is, as a board, we are also charged with spending the money, uh, the tax money realistically and logically. And I've talked to Jay about it and, and trying to find some common ground on this issue. Jay said it would be impossible for us to run shuttle buses back for P E classes to work out at the new stadium. Now, I understand, I understand that that's not perfect, but I think you would agree that what you're proposing is not perfect either. There's pros and cons with both proposals. And I just think it makes more sense from a expenditure side of things to solve two problems with one stone. If we build a new track at the high school, we're still on the hook with the taxpayers' money to correct the issue that's going on at J C Stadium. Now, you made the comment earlier and you're exactly right. You said that when we decided, uh, at the last time, we decided that we were gonna put it at the high school, and that is a fact. But one thing that changed in the interim is we put a temporary patch on the, on the track at the stadium and we thought that issue was solved. And since that time, it's been revealed that it's not solved. And I just think we're ahead of the game. If we can solve two problems with one money and save a third, to me, it, it makes sense. And I do not disagree with anything you said about accessibility to children, but that's just one factor that we as a board have to consider. Thank you.
Well, if you think about it, uh, if you go to the state and you ask the state for any money for this track or any athletic facility, they're gonna tell you no. The state's gonna tell you no. So my thing is that we, because they're looking at what is best, not what's best for the kids, but expenditures for academics, okay? So that is why I'm saying that it needs to go over, over at that facility over there, okay? It's a six lane track. I'm sorry, I don't see you, uh, without losing revenue for football, putting an eight lane track there. I don't know, I don't know any, um, any, uh, region that runs a, uh, six lane region, uh, track meet, as far as the, the region meet is concerned. But like I said, uh, it'll pay for itself within time, it'll bring revenue if you are able to put it, uh, there, uh, for, uh, over there. It'll bring revenue for our county because when you have track meets, people gotta eat somewhere. And those kids gotta, they're gonna stop at McDonald's, they're gonna stop at, you know, Dairy Queen, they're gonna stop at Burger King, they're gonna stop at all these different places, uh, to eat and everything. So, um, I, like I say, I'm very adamant about that, that track going over at the high school. I think it would be most, most beneficial for us. Also, if you got it at the stadium, once again, it's wearing tear just from people of whomever wants to come on, on there and they may be riding a four wheeler on it. Who knows? You know, you put it over there, you lock it up, everybody, you lock it, you lock it up, you say you got a six foot fence, you lock it up and everybody understands, you repaved that over there. First of all, I asked the guy when he was here, when we agreed to do that over there, I asked that gentleman, I said, are you sure that this will work? He said, yes. Okay? Because I mentioned about the pavement, you know, before we put that surface out there. So you sure that will work? Okay? He said, yes. So I've also asked and inquired about the warranty. What does the warranty state for that facility? Because if I'm not mistaken, we're right at three years. We haven't met that three year thing. I'm sorry that, you know, uh, it's not doing what it needs to do, but I feel like companies have insurance for a reason. You know, so, um, I, I feel like that we need to, you know, demand them to repair the way it should be repaired and not just go out there and pour some solution down there and then the next day it looks the same way. Because it is awful, I will agree to that. It is awful. But we need to think for the future. And that, to me, the future is there. And what is best for our kids and what will get the most use from our kids is also over there. And I too have talked to people, and not just the people at the track, I've talked to people in, in, in higher places and the same thing has come out. That's ridiculous. Why are they gonna put it over there and the kids are over at the school? That is what people have told me. These are not special interest people either. And that is the, that is what has been told me. But that's, I'm gonna leave it alone. That's the way I feel about it. I'm not upset about anything, but I'm passionate about.
Some of the problems that went with, uh, putting down this surface out there is, one of them did not, um, make the kids reroute or the audience or the participants reroute their interest when we came today. It was several misses of, of stuff being kicked up during the process. And this track was put down in the middle of two hurricanes. That, that's a major concern and that was a concern of mine. Um, I will tell you that when we had several discussions from a security standpoint about rerouting, um, we had some disagreements with the previous administration. And those disagreements were very interesting because those problems could have been solved then, but they wasn't. So that's why that track's messed up out there. I did, however, ask Dr. Brinson to, um, gather some more detailed numbers for the track. One thing I don't wanna do out there is I don't want to put down a track and not redo the stands. For a security hazard, we need to change the form of how people enter that stadium and what they're doing inside of that stadium. It's like a circus out there. A lot of y'all are in the, in, in the stands, sitting down, coaches on the fields, but I'm the security leader for the justice police department and the sheriff's office. And so I know I deal with the circus and that's a part of my volunteer service because I can't get paid. But I deal with it every Friday night. And we got to change that. If we're gonna build it out there, we gotta do everything we need to do out there, stands and a track. Now, um, what I don't wanna do is prolong the term for building a track. We talked about a track, talked about a track. I think it's gonna take a little more than a year to redo all that stuff out there and get bids and get quotes and get a design on how those, uh, stands need to be, how it needs to sit out there, how the track needs to sit. Um, and that's gonna take a long time, um, to do that, just sitting here thinking about all the things that need to be done to the stadium. We have plans for this track. And so these are some tough decisions. I do wanna know a, uh, overall number for stands and a track. One million dollars? I, I just don't think it's worth spending a million dollars out there just to do the track when there's so many needs out there that need to be met.
Uh, just a couple of points I'd like to elaborate on the things that Sharon said. This, this bid or this rough estimate that Jay had of one million dollars was by the company that looked at that and put forth that rough estimate said that they can make the track fit in the same footprint. No, no stadiums, nothing in the stadium will have to be moved. It will be an eight lane track. It will be Olympic sized and it'll fit in the footprint that we have now. And, uh, you know, Sharon made some good comments about the revenue that, uh, that a successful track program will generate. Well, it doesn't matter where that track is located, the revenue will be the same. The people who are gonna come here, if the, if the track is at J C Stadium, they're still gonna eat here in Wayne County. So I, I really don't think that. So, I, I really don't think that adds a lot to the debate, uh, but, uh, I did wanna state the fact that the track will fit in the existing footprint, with no changes to the, uh, to the stadium. Or, or no, without having to remove any of the state of seating to add that, those extra two lanes.
There is no way.
Am I quoting that correctly, Jay?
He may have said that, but I can tell you, I've been out to that track, I've walked that track there, and there's no way between here and Hades that is gonna fit an eight-lane track. There is not gonna happen. I can tell you. Because their, their regu-, their regulation, now, he can come in, he can come in and, he, no, I'm telling you a fact.
No, you're not, you're not, you know a lot, but you don't know how to-
He can come in and squeeze those lanes, and make those lanes more narrow than what they should be, but it will not be a nationally certified track. It will not be that, and that'll be a waste of your money, not to be, put that, to put that much money to something. It, and for it not to be a nationally certified track, for these kids to go and maybe break records, and it means nothing, because it's not a certified track.
But that's not, that's not, that's not the information we got from that coach. That's also not the information we got from, uh, Mr. Buckland way back, when we first started this. Way back, when we first started this discussion, me and Ray Thornton met out there with Buckland. And yeah, it's very tight, and you would have to, you know, you'd have to do some, do away with that fence that we have around, which, which comes back to that, you know, controlling, um, the flow of the crowds and that sort of thing, or having that wear and tear on there. But it will fit, according to those two folks, and they've done a bunch of them, so. They say it will-
Dr. Brinson, we're looking at-
My concern is, like I said, the kids. They, I think it needs to be where the kids are located. We're missing-
Sir?
We're looking at one point seven million, plus what to resurface that? You gave a number, I don't get it.
I'm gonna get, between forty-five and sixty. I got two, two quotes, one of them's forty-five, and one of them's sixty thousand, so.
Did we not get one quote as well for one, the one point five, that had everything to it?
No, we have not actually.
I thought we had got one quote that, we had one that was one point seven. I thought we had one that was actually the one point five. I think that was the actual lowest quote. I may be wrong, that's why I'm asking.
While you're looking that up, Dr. Brinson, don't put the coaches on the spot. In my experience as a high school principal, he didn't do a whole lot of walking. The, uh, weight room or shooting basketball. How much would P.E. programs utilize a track if they were nearby?
I, I don't think we'd, uh, I know Ms. Daniels said ninety percent. It's one of her facts, ninety percent of the kids would be on the track. I don't think we'd be on the track much. I mean, especially me being the head track coach. I don't want fifteen hundred kids on the track all day. I think that's where, a lot of wear and tear there.
Well, it wouldn't be fifteen hundred, but I say ninety percent. I mean, you would be able to use it. It would get ninety percent use, okay? Uh, for instance, uh, most other places, they, that, that's what they do. They use that track for that. Not only do you use it for that, um, your soccer team could use that track to, to, to do conditioning with. Your cross-country team, if it's too wet in the back out there, and they need somewhere to run, they can just come right there and, and, and run, you know, use that facility as well. I mean, every, uh, sport can actually utilize that track. Uh, and, and like I said, it is for, when you put one point five million dollars into something, one point seven million dollars into something, you want it used by the students. You know, I understand what you're saying as far as the wear and tear. I don't want it there to just sit there just to be pretty. I want it to be utilized by our students. You, you know what I'm saying? Taken care of, but utilized by our students.
Right. What, I mean, if, if, nobody asked me, but my opinion would be to have it at the stadium. As a head track coach, we have everything at the stadium. Concession stand lights, um, parking, bleachers, everything. Now, if we, if we do move it to the practice field, which is, I mean, it, it's gonna be a problem. The park, to walk, 'cause you, you, there's a practice, there's a football practice that you have to walk across. So, if somebody does come up with a wheelchair, they have to go over grass. Um, there's no-
They're gonna have sidewalks.
You can put a sidewalk by the practice field, yes? I just see a, a problem.
Well, he, uh, had, were you here when we looked at the plans? No, we, we, the plans were all laid out and, you know, and that's what I'm saying. And this is my frustration, is that we've gone through this, and we've, uh, let, had everything laid out. We spent five, six thousand dollars for everything to be mapped out and laid out. And then, uh, it just seems to me, when we change administrations and stuff, somebody decides, said, "Okay, we're gonna do something different." And that, that really is my frustration, that we had agreed on this, it had been voted on, settled on, and then, here we are again.
Ms. Daniels, there was, there was one bid, the last time we bid out of there was one bid at, at one point seven, and one at one point, one point five, it's some change. One point five, one point seven.
What, what happened to those plans that we looked over at the old board office when, uh, Buckley came down and a few other people came?
We have, that, that are ours, but we're paid for, we're paid for.
I think we need to table this and, uh, take some time, um, and look over these, uh, plans, and also gather the information on what it's gonna take. Now, Mr. Ray and Coach, I'm, I'm definitely not, um, against putting it at the stadium. But like I said, um, the problem with putting it at the stadium is that stadium needs work. Um, it's a mess out there. Y'all coaching, y'all don't deal with the mess. I deal with the mess, my guys deal with the mess. Um, and we gotta make some changes out there for the safety of students again, because those are students running around that football field. Um, and so-
And this Wayne County, they're not gonna sit the kids down, it is what it is.
I would like to sit some more.
We're gonna talk about some policy changes on that too, about parents dropping the kids off. That's, that's something definitely need to be discussed, um, as well, but.
Well, let me, let me just, let me just summarize, and I'm gonna give you my, my recommendation is, um, this project, like I said, this, we just can't, they can't start tomorrow, so there's gonna have to be the decision where it's going, and I'm gonna need some direction on that. I think things have changed greatly since last time we decided it, in a lot of different ways, in my opinion. Um, but I need, I won't, I would like to formulate from this board of where it's going, and then we will, uh, go from there. Till then, this project's just at a standstill, okay? I just wanna make sure everybody understands. And the best-case scenario, just as far as the timeframe, I just wanna make sure you're aware of this. I mean, best case, if we don't run into weather or anything else, you know, you're looking at three months to complete it, no matter where it's going. Um, if you're gonna be, if you're, if you're going back to the stadium, we gotta choreograph that between-
Graduation.
It's about too late now to, to get it done for graduation. I just, I'm not comfortable trying to squeeze it in, uh, graduation in the first football game. We're not comfortable with that, thunderstorms and that summer weather. So, you're really looking at, um, you know, first, last football game, um. And I'm, I'm gonna go back, and my, my original, my original opinion on this hasn't changed from, from the get-go, okay? Uh, I've always thought it needed to be at the stadium, because I think we can make the, I think we can make, stretch the dollar further. I don't disagree, we need to, to be progressive and that sort of thing. Unfortunately, as a system, this is the first, this is the first time in probably fifteen, twenty years that we've been able to take money out of our East Plots and kinda spread it out. So, we're trying to do a lot of things over these next five years to milk that, that's just not even, um, you know, we already have about ten, eleven million dollars of sixteen million allocated. And so, we're trying to spread that last five or six million dollars out of, over everything, and that's all we're gonna generate. That's all we're gonna generate over five years. Now, the next East Plots, um, after that five years, we'll have a little bit more money to do some of these things, but, um-
But this money was originally, uh, decided upon, uh, when we got that flip of one point five million dollars. That's where we generally, and we tabled it to put that in reserve. But that's where we originally, uh, made the decision on how much we would, uh, have as an expenditure was from that flip of a million. That was the original.
Yeah, I, my point was, I'm trying to make that one point five or whatever we're deciding to allocate, go further. I think if you put it at the stadium, you can take care of your track problem, and, and spread that out a little bit more to address some of these other issues is my idea to, to, to approach and do. Maybe home stands only, this, this East Plots-wise, concession stand, you know, entrance, that sort of thing. Um, and then you address some of the other needs, maybe in the next East Plots.
Are the kids gonna be trying to thumb rides again?
You know, the, uh, consensus that I'm hearing is that we're gonna table this to do a little bit more research. I would hope we would be prepared in our next board meeting, uh, to make a decision, uh, one way or the other. And Nick, you commented, this has been an ongoing battle for twenty years, uh, trying to get this track done. And, uh, you know, I think we, we've had enough time to, to do some research, and I think Jay's gonna come back with a little bit more information. But I would encourage all of our board members to, next time we meet, let's be ready to make a decision. Uh, and, uh, let's move ahead with whichever way we decide to go.
If you're just sharing with me what information you'd like me to gather, I will get it to you as quick as I can.
Information on the cost of, of reconstruction of some of the things that's gonna go along with putting the track on these, at the stadium versus doing the stuff at there, we wanna do a cost analysis. If we put the track out there, if we're gonna redo those home stands, we're gonna change up the entrance ways and everything like that. Because we cannot have people running around that track all night.
You're right, and, and, Nick, that's a great point. And we're gonna have to change our way of doing things, like Sharon commented that, uh, it's been a tradition in Wayne County for the kids to come out and, uh, for the Wayne County Board of Education to serve as a babysitting service. And these kids need to be in this, in their seats. Uh, they don't need to be wandering around, there's just too many, too much mischief to get in, so, uh-
What they do about concessions, the concession stand is right there on the track.
That's why I said, you got a lot of changes to make before we do that.
It's right there on the track.
Dr. Brinson, I'd like to, to table it, but I agree by the next meeting. And my reason is, Mr. Harris and I have not been apprised of, of any of this. We're kinda caught off-guard. I don't know exactly where y'all are looking to build it. I'd like to go out there personally and look, and then I want some assurance that it can be an eight-lane certified track. If I had to vote tonight, I'd say the stadium, but I really would like to look and, from a vote, I'd like to know more about what I'm voting on out there. As far as walking the public, University of Georgia, they, they allow public, and I think they could easily enforce it and say, "No, this isn't public access." So, I'm not too worried about a little bit of public walking on it, but I would like to look at some, some bottom numbers. And I'd like, I think you and too, Mr. Harris, would be able to actually see what we're, so we compare apples to apples. So, I don't have no problem with moving forward next meeting.
So, how are we gonna do the, what, have they discussed where the long jump pit is gonna go? 'Cause it can't, it can't go where it's at. They discussed that. They discussed where your shot put, that shot put, we got there, we got guys that'll come to a competition, and it, the, the shot put would be almost on the, uh, on the concession stand, on the visitor's side. Oh, they throwing that thing. And, you know, I know we got the discus set up right outside the door here. So, somebody's gonna have to be regulating when you, you're charging for people coming in and out. You're gonna have to make sure that there's a, uh, an adult with that, with those kids when they're actually throwing and stuff. So, I just, we're just putting those things out there for you to, you know, be thinking about, 'cause that could be a liability, you know? As a coach, I like my kids to be close as possible, you know?
The, uh, the gentleman that gave us the rough estimate of a million dollars said he can put all the track and field events inside the footprint that we have by moving the gate on the, or the fence on the north end of the stadium and taking in part of the parking lot. He said it'll all fit in there.
And he gave y'all that for one point five million dollars, digging up a parking lot, is all that too?
One million, man, one million.
Oh, then we weren't cheap before, and then what, what we got?
Well, we, we have to-
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
All right, motion to table?
I make a motion to table it, but I would like to meet with somebody and, and, uh, be better informed.
Okay.
And then I'll be ready to make the decision next meeting.
Move to second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Pitkin?
Yes, ma'am.
Moving into executive session, discuss or deliberate upon employment compensation, hiring, disbarred, action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation of a rating of public officer or entity, and so the position of superintendent. Have a motion for executive decision.
Don't move.
Second. Move to second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Pitkin?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't move.
Second. Move to second.
Ms. Rouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Pitkin?
Yes, ma'am.
Personal recommendations. Certified recommendations for the leader Harper, Wayne County Hospital. Michael Harper, Martha Pecorino School, Certified Transfer. Dr. Brad McDaniel, interim WCHS Principal to WCHS Principal. Certified Designation, Brandon Mosley, Martha Pecorino School, May twenty-fourth. Classified Recommendation, Crystal Larissa Transportation. Jack Madriguez, Maggots, Community Coach Recommendation. Hunter Robinson, Baseball, Martha Pecorino School. Motion to approve superintendent's recommendations. So, move.
Second.
Move to second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Pitkin?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Matt, any comments?
Uh, two. One, I wanna thank Ray Darson and the, uh, touchdown club for inviting us to the banquet, Football Banquet. Very, very impressive. The other thing concerned with Dr. Brinson is that State of Georgia trying to mandate the window for us to start and end the calendar. Where are we on that?
That's, uh, that's moving down the field a little bit, that's certainly gonna be up for discussion, uh, you know, during the General, General Assembly. So, you know, what's proposed, I'm sure you've seen it, is, you know, you can't start school before a certain date, and you have to end before a certain date.
Right.
Um, which would certainly narrow down what we've been used to in, in, in the past. There are all these little days during the school year, you just won't have enough, enough days, you'll have to go pretty much straight, straight through, and possibly get out of the whole week of Thanksgiving, some of the things that we've been accustomed to. But the, the, the talk that I hear is that they're, they're gonna, they're gonna defer probably back to, to the local decisions. Now, what does that mean? Uh, I guess we'll see, so. I don't know. Nothing is, we'll have to wait till the end of the session. It'll change two or three more times, I'm sure. I'll keep you posted, though.
Well, I was on Savannah News, and you're looking at like, uh, last week of August. That's a pretty drastic change from what we got back in May and two.
It's all around, you know, tourism and, uh, having that school age workforce and that sort of thing, which, you know, the, the scary thing is, you know, I'm worried about it taking it out of the educators', um, control, and putting it towards folks that are not educators, parents, and those type folks, they probably want longer summers, you know, so. We've always tried to build a schedule that's best for construction, academic, academic achievement, so, anyway, I'll keep you posted.
Well, mine, they gonna go a hundred and eighty days student, and the teacher's gonna work a hundred and ninety. I like it that our staff can have some input.
I do too.
That's all.
Well, uh, I just wanna say that, uh, what I'm gonna say is not, um, on the Board of Education, that it's me as a person. I would just like, um, everyone to pray for our kids, that, you know, that they, uh, they're okay physically, mentally, uh, spiritually, uh, so that we can make it through the rest of the school year, you know? 'Cause, you know, the heart's a little heavy. But, um, I just want everybody, uh, to pray for our kids, you know, strength comes in numbers, I truly believe in that.
No, I don't really have anything I, I interrupted you all doing, I shouldn't have done that, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, dang, we, we cool.
Well, I know we cool, but, that's not the way I know we're doing it. But anyway, I'm, I'm good.
Uh, on behalf of the Lynn Hauss family, I wanna thank the Wayne County Board of Education for, uh, their confidence and, and belief in renaming- for their confidence and belief in renaming the playing surface out there to stadium to honor Lynn as well as Coach Donaldson and Coach Madriguez. The entire House family was very gratified by that, and they want, they wanted me to extend their thanks, thanks to you. Thank you very much.
Dr. McDaniel, congratulations and welcome aboard as the official principal of Wayne County High School. Proud of you. Many great things, you know you have our support, and we know that you wanna do the right things for the students. Thank you for going through the process with us and serving as interim. I know it was kind of a scary situation for, for you to be asked to do that in such an interesting time that we were going through, but you took on the task, and we appreciate you doing that at the time that you did it, and we look forward to great things.
I'll just echo that. I can't get Dr. McDaniel to get back in the truck with me now, that's kinda how I told him I wanted to be the interim, I said, "Come on, let's take a ride." But certainly wanna welcome him aboard, and he's, he's done a fantastic job. I'm very excited about the future. A lot of great things going on in Wayne County High School under his leadership, and just, just, just short time, so it's gonna be good for kids. Also wanna thank Ms. Mosley, Ms. Amy Denny, and Dr. Gordon, they helped me in this process to, and it was very, very well-run and, you know, and the cream came to the top, as Mr. Cook used to say, but welcome aboard.
We're adjourned by adjournments.